I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Ratone City Commission. Mike Lenk, will we have roll call, please?
Mayor Sagata.
President.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster. Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Giacomo.
Present.
Thank you. Could you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You all can see we are taking our precautionary measures. We have our masks, we have our social distancing. I am going to remove mine, though, to do the speaking, so I can hear myself. This time announcements, we do have the only thing going on. Next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, June 9th, 2020, 6:00 p.m. here in the chambers. At this time, we will take items from citizens present. Is there anyone wishing to address the commission at this time? I believe we have one person here. Alrighty, if you could just come to the podium and state your name.
How you all doing?
Good.
My name is Gerald Kimball. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
If you'd like to remove your mask while you're speaking, we'll let you do that.
It'd be easier, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. I've got a problem. I had a problem Saturday. One of the police officers was off duty. I guess he was off duty. And his parents live across the alley from me. And I started hearing some music blowing, really blowing it up. So I called dispatcher and asked them if they'd send the car. I told them where it was over to and asked them to, you know, keep it down. So I went and filled up my car, got me some supper. Went to the bank. Come back, and the music's still going. So I called dispatch again. I mean, that's going loud. It's blowing, it's blowing up the whole neighborhood. And I called dispatch again. This time, a lady answered, my Didi or, I haven't got all their names memorized. They've got mine memorized and my address, I think. Anyway. So the way she sounded, it was kind of a, oh, well, not again, you know, like the one much used. So she said she'd send the car out. And, you know, I got the impression that wasn't going to do any good to send the car out from that. So I grabbed my trash, I was going to carry out the trash. Went to carry out the trash, opened the gate, and music's still blaring. So I looked over, I threw my trash, looked over their fence. And there's a detective or a policeman, of course, he's out of uniform, he's got a black charger sitting there in the driveway. And the red door's open, the radio on that, all that charger just a-blaring. He's washing it off. And, of course, they mad. I'm already mad now, because there was no point in this. I said, turn it down, turn it down. You're not the only one living here. He said, well, you ask me nicely and say, please, and I'll just do it. You know, like he's standing on the pedestal. And so I said, no. I said, I shouldn't have to do that. You know, this whole neighborhood here, and you should show respect. You know, just common respect for everybody. All your neighbors. You know, there's no point in it, especially a police officer. That's ridiculous. He ought to be, you know, I know he may have been out of, off duty, but still, people know he's a police officer. And this loses integrity to a uniform. You know, it's, it's not a good thing. They're supposed to act like, at least be respectable anytime. I would think so. I wish the captain was here. But anyway. That was a problem. I think that's the way they're, I was told that some of the officers acted like this. I really, you know, you kind of brush off what people say if you don't know for yourself, but now I know. And, uh, I don't know his first name. I've met him a few times. But, uh, he lives there in Brilliant. One of the captains or one of the bosses lived down the street on the corner. His parents, well, I don't, excuse me, I don't know where he lived, but his parents lived there in Brilliant, across the alley from me. But anyway, that's, I thought that was extremely unnecessary. It shouldn't have happened at all. No, he did turn it down. They did turn it down. His kids were out there and his parents were out there. He did turn it down after that. I can still hear, at least I couldn't hear it in my house. I could hear it in the backyard, but I couldn't hear it in my house, you know. At least it's down quite a bit to what it was. At least I couldn't hear it over in the apartments across the street from me. Anyway, that was, that was a little bit ridiculous. And, uh, you know, it's just, it's just, it seems to be a common attitude a lot of people have in this town. I don't know why. But it's, you know, uh, this afternoon, I was, I like fish. I like working my fishing stuff around stuff. I was on the computer. And the neighbors are playing basketball, you know. You know, one thing about Ratone here, everything echoes. This is a canyon. Everything echoes. And, of course, I can hear the basketball bouncing and stuff, and I know the kids are playing basketball. And then I hear a car speaker, boom, 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 boom. So I walk outside, I already know from the direction it's coming, it's coming from the east side of the apartments. So I walk over there. I walk up beside the car and I look in there. Now, he's turned it off. He's seen me walking up there. He's turned it off. And I said, you know that your boy is coming to my house. He's not saying anything. Now, notice he's got a little girl in there, or a little boy. He's got a baby in there, two or three years old. He's still not saying anything. So I just drag my shoulders. He's already turned the radio off. And that's when it gets funny, you know. I'm walking by and I'm getting my camera out and I take a picture of my plates. He's backing up and he says, you don't be taking no picture of my car. I'll call the cops. You mind your own business? I said, well, if you hadn't had your business in my house, I wouldn't be here minding your business. Duh. You know, what's this? So I turned him into Child Protective Services, for having that baby in there playing the music that loud. That baby deserves it. He can't take care of her properly. She deserves somebody that can, or he. You know, this is, I don't know. But that's the problem I got. And I was here, in here a while back, probably a year or so ago, I guess about a year ago. And it's quietened down some since then, for sure. But I don't know how police officers can take it when you call them, how they can take it seriously if they're going to do it themselves, you know. That's, uh, that's like a two-sided coin. That's what I had to say. And that's all. Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you.
And we will look into it.
Y'all have a good one.
Thank you. Alrighty. This time, we will move into committee reports from commissioners and, like, oh, we got another, we got another, no?
No, it's Desiree.
Oh, okay. It's just Desiree, eh?
It's just me.
Okay. We'll do committee reports. Commissioner Chatterley.
Okay. The Ratone Beautification Coalition, the downtown flowers are up. I'm sure you all have noticed. They look quite beautiful. We'd like to thank all the volunteers who helped hang up the flowers. Also, a special thanks to the Lyric Foundation for purchasing a four-wheeler that's used for watering. So now the coalition has this four-wheeler that's going to be used throughout the summer. Lisa Camp is going to be moving out watering again. A special thanks to RPS for hanging up those eight-foot pennants again this year. Those are looking good. I think they expanded those a little bit. The downtown flower banners will be hung up at the end of the month when the senior banners come down. The yard of the month competition is going to be July, August, and September this year. They just, you know, some, especially this spring, things aren't greening up too quick, so they're going to wait, not do June, but do July, August, and September. And the vintage concert was rescheduled again. Instead of Sunday, August 23rd, it will now be Saturday, August 22nd, at 6:00 p.m. at the shore. The outdoor recreation task force, we had completed this a while back. I just finally compiled it all for you all. So there's a handout there. It kind of is divided into sections, and this was just our, a very small group and some ideas that we came up with. So it's by no means anything that has to be implemented, or just some suggestions from a few different perspectives. There are several things that were kind of underway. Obviously, they've been delayed or possibly changed because of COVID-19. There's some things that we thought were definite needs that are highlighted there. We had some categories of stuff that was land-related and trail-related suggestions. Tours and business ideas, some of which we had discussed as a commission, too. I included anything that we had talked about there. And then some event ideas, some promotional ideas, which you'll see in the back. We had a, it's not in color. I didn't print the colors. I went out at home, because I don't have a color printer, but it has kind of a vintage retro-looking distressed logo. And with some possible links for the back in front of a t-shirt that could be used to specifically promote outdoor recreation with our new logo, but kind of give it a vintage, a vintage look, which is really popular right now. And then there's just some other good ideas listed there that have to do with various things. So that's available. And the senior center board meeting is tomorrow, and North Sidle, New Mexico Economic Development District will begin again in the middle of June. And that's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Giacomo.
Yes, RPS, the Ratone Public Service Board Director met on May 6th, 2020. Needs a telephone conference to comply with the COVID-19 and the Mexico General Governor's Order. Financial assistance information is covered, discussed, approved by the board. This is for year 2021 audit. And in our audit, we discussed and approved by the board members, Sandy Chavez, RPS manager, ordered off the new electrical gear, and Ian James down. She stated that 777 new meters stolen from the state. Fifty-two RPS assistants that are in the manner of covering for bug-free work activities is formed by his crew. And extension on the federal canyon transportation by the big period. On the other, Johnson Memorial Library work, not in this month, on March 16th. The library started, started, what we, in order to be efficient, of ten people on the library facility, most scientists, people, staff. Which goes down under ten, I believe. All this and that comply with the COVID-19. And it comes as a order. That's all we got.
Thank you. Commissioner Chavez.
I do. I have a water board, a water board met on May 19th, 2020. Lake Maloya is currently 2.5 feet below the spillways. We have very little inflow at this time, and we're operating mainly on the similar system. We heard and approved the 2020 and 2021 proposed budget. And a report on the, on the water projects. The filter plant is close, very close to completion. The lift station is closed by now. I'm thinking that it is. We're waiting on some new fencing. We heard the current financial report and approved it for presenting to the commission tonight. The general manager, Mr. Sykes, gave us an overview of all the work that has been completed by the water crew, and it's been quite extensive. And that's all I have.
Thank you. See, I continue to meet weekly with the governor's executive council, the mayor's executive council. As you know, we've started the soft opening. I see she has announced also now, beginning tomorrow, there's a soft opening, reopening for outdoor patio services at dine-in restaurants. So we'll see how that goes. Other than that, no really big significant changes than what you all have heard on TV and that. The New Mexico Municipal League met on the 12th. I lost my notes. I don't know what I did with them. Oh, there. Never mind. I'm writing on the back of them. Okay. A couple of highlights that come from that. You know, the league operates off of the collection of dues from member cities. This year, they are probably going to offer a payment option to cities due to the COVID-19 and the revenues, the loss of revenues. We're hoping that at least to get at least, we would like to see, you know, 100% participation again. But we're hoping to get at least 75% of the dues. That way, we can operate. Did point out that March disbursements were out, and they weren't as bad as folks had anticipated, but they were quick to point out. That's because there was a lot of hoarding, expensing, hoarding purchases going on at that time. People were hoarding products. So that probably is not a true reflection. We'll probably see a more accurate reflection with this month's GRT. And we'll see what happens. They are projecting that fiscal year '22 on the state's side will probably be a bigger shortfall than what's happening this year. They're saying, right now, it looks like a $2.5 billion shortfall. Because in that year is when some of these mandates that the governor passed, i.e. raises for certain employees and that, will will kick in again, and there is no, that was done without reoccurring money coming in. She used the excess to get that money, get those raises this time. So they're projecting almost a $2.5 billion shortfall for '22, '23. Other than that, Mr. Berry, I said the phone calls with the mayor's task force was pretty much standard business. Soft reopening for the outside dining tomorrow. We have another call Thursday. We'll see what happens there. And that's all I have. Commissioner Schuster, nice of you to join us tonight.
Yes, sorry to delay.
That's all right. We're doing committee reports, so if you'd like to give anything you've got right now.
I assume Commissioner Chavez did the water board.
I did.
And the housing authority board met today on the phone conference. They have some exciting news. They will be, they have been successfully running the lunch program, breakfast and lunch program for school kids. They're hoping, they're going to run that through the summer, and then they're hoping that, most of the schools are hoping to be able to take those programs over. The only school that they've not been in touch with is Maxwell, so they're, but they're pretty sure that all the schools will be able to take over the school lunch programs through the summer. And if the kids are still not able to attend actual classes, they're beginning next August, the end of August. They, they also have met with the Northern Regional Housing Authority and Las Vegas Housing Authority. They will be combining. It will be a slow transfer. Mr. Baca, I believe, will be the director of that program. So the transfer will take place, and the target date for it to be effective is January 2021. At which point, the local board will dissolve and become a governor-appointed board. Because it's the entire, it'll be Taos County, Colfax County, Las Vegas, and the whole northern region. So I think that will be a good thing. They've been anticipating this, so things are still, they're in the works right now, so we'll keep posted at least. Next meeting, they have a new server that allows them to work from home, and so that's been helpful through this COVID-19. And, of course, they're always working on different repairs of different buildings and projects, so those are, that's all I have.
Alrighty, thank you. Okay, moving on into the business portion of the meeting. We will go to item 6A. Approval of the May 12th, 2020 regular commission meeting minutes. I believe you all have had a chance to look at them.
Make a motion to approve the May 12th, 2020 regular minutes.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as published. Is there any further discussion? I love this part. All in favor, get the vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item B, deliberate and act on resolution 2020-31, appointment of deputy clerk. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and commission, under this item, I would like to call on the city clerk, Michael Ann Antonucci. I'll just say, in a brief comment, what we're attempting to do is really cross-train all of the functions in the office. And, of course, Michael Ann serves as clerk and treasurer, and so we're acting on a plan to back up both of those functions. Those are two really distinctly different functions that Michael Ann performs and does a good job at. And then, generally, the office be able to cross-train for all of the jobs that we have. So I will turn it over to the city clerk.
Thank you.
Mayor and commission, as the city manager stated, our ultimate goal is cross-training and to provide some backup to my position. We've faced some tremendous challenges this past year, and so I think even with the COVID health emergency and just different staff, including myself, having to be out due to family emergencies and things of that nature, it's quite scary when you don't have backup. And so to provide continuity of municipal services, we are looking to appoint a deputy. We also will be having a new hire later this week, possibly next week, for our financial operations clerk. And so they will serve also somewhat as kind of a deputy treasurer, more on the financial side, so that we can provide backup for payroll, accounts payable, also to myself, and reporting to Department of Finance, doing budgeting, quarterly reporting, handling the audit. So a lot of those very critical functions that our office performs. So it is my pleasure this evening that we are recommending to you via approval of this resolution that we would appoint Desiree Treheal to serve as my deputy clerk, and she's here with us this evening. Desiree has worked in our office since January of 2014, and during that time, she has gained very valuable experience, and she has become an asset to the operations of our office. So I think she is an excellent candidate to serve as our deputy clerk. In addition, she will enroll in the municipal clerk certification program that would start in the fall and start to obtain those hours needed to become a certified municipal clerk. So we've been pretty successful over the years. You might recall Geneva Treheal in the past, when she worked for our office, was my deputy clerk, and she also became certified. Robin Osborne was pursuing that certification, but didn't get a chance to complete it. And then we also had Tricia Garcia, who was a certified municipal clerk. So it's a great program, and so I look forward to Desiree starting that program and working towards her certification as well. It definitely is a benefit to our office to have highly trained staff, and the municipal league does a great job with that particular training program. So as the appointment to deputy clerk, then she would assist in performing all of the municipal clerk duties that are imposed by state statute and also by city ordinance. So Desiree, I think if we could real quickly, maybe we'll just do the oath of office. But I think I'll let you vote on the resolution, and then we'll go ahead and do the...
You never know how this Chavez guy is going to vote, you know.
Just in case, I'll move to approve the appointment of Desiree for deputy clerk.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution 2020-31, appointing Desiree Treheal as deputy clerk. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so if we could, we'll real quickly, as the municipal clerk, I do have the authority to give an oath.
Cool.
So if you would. So if you'll repeat after me, raise your right hand. I, Desiree Treheal.
I, Desiree Treheal.
Having been appointed to the office of deputy city clerk.
Having been appointed to the office of deputy city clerk.
In the city of Ratone, state of New Mexico.
In the city of Ratone, state of New Mexico.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the laws of the state of New Mexico.
And the laws of the state of New Mexico.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Assist with the duties.
Assist with the duties.
Of the office of Ratone city clerk.
Of the office of the Ratone city clerk.
To the best of my ability by this oath.
To the best of my ability by this oath.
Well, you're officially sworn in.
Alrighty. Very good.
Very good.
Thank you. I'm really excited, and I appreciate the opportunity.
You bet.
We're very excited.
And even though it says deputy, no firearms involved. I like that guy to deputy.
Thank you.
You bet.
Uh, no, we better not.
Thank you.
Okay, item C. To deliberate and act on resolution 2020-32, authorizing changes to list of authorized personnel for FNBNM bank deposits and petty cash. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and commission, I would give you a briefing again and then ask Michael Ann to correct all the things that I might, you know, need corrected. But the resolution is fairly straightforward, and it's, what the commission would be considering here is updating the list of personnel from the office that are authorized when it comes to banking procedures. And dealing with petty cash, dealing with bank deposits, those kind of routine, daily tasks that they would perform in the office. We do have a couple of new team members in the office, Laura Palmer and Sherry Romero will be joining us. So this resolution would authorize those employees to do those. And, of course, when we talk to auditors, something they're looking for would be that more people are involved in the oversight of these kinds of transactions. So, in effect, the commission would be approving a number of people that are authorized to have an oversight, allow us to cover that auditing requirement, and then some flexibility with the personnel that we have in the office. I'm sure Michael Ann's... I'm sure Michael Ann's got some additional comments.
Okay.
Mayor and Commissioner, I think the resolution is pretty straightforward. As city manager Barry stated, we do have some additional staff, so this is a good opportunity for us to update this. And then we would also provide a copy to the bank so that they know who is authorized to act on our behalf, whether it's accepting petty cash or just taking those daily deposits. So I would recommend approval so that we can update this list.
Right. Any questions or comments for Mr. Berry or Ms. Antonucci?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-32, Authorizing Changes to List of Authorized Personnel for Bank Deposits and Petty Cash.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2020-32, Authorizing Changes of the Authorized Personnel for Bank Deposits. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item D, Deliverate an Act on Dispatch Agreement Between the City of Raton and the Town of Springer. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, the dispatch agreement is a, an agreement that we talk about numerous times through the course of time. This is a renewal of an existing agreement between the Town of Springer and the City of Raton. Of course, as we've talked about before, the city of Raton does provide dispatch services for the region and a number of public agencies, and Town of Springer is included in that. So under this agreement, the period would be for one year, and the city of Raton would provide 24-hour-a-day dispatch services to the Town of Springer related to operation of their police department, Springer Fire, and EMS. In exchange, the Town of Springer pays the city of Raton $32,004. I believe that is not changed from previous years. We do a review of the fees and a calculation based on call volume and a prorated share of that to each agency. So this has not changed. We're not recommending a change, and I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Berry? Entertaining motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the dispatch agreement between the City of Raton and the Town of Springer. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the dispatch agreement between the City of Raton and the Town of Springer. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item E, Deliverate an Act on Vector Control Services Agreement Between the City of Raton and Colfax County. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, the vector control service agreement is also a renewal of an existing agreement. It's an agreement that has existed between Colfax County and the city of Raton over the past four or five years, and the terms of the agreement are really not changed from those previous years. So Colfax County contracts for vector control services, that is spraying for mosquitoes during the summer. The city of Raton agrees to pay their share of that service in the amount of $3,000 or the amount not to exceed $3,000. There can be years, and this could be one of them, where if we're especially dry, you would do less spraying. So the intent of that term would be if we didn't spray very much or we didn't spray at all, our prorated share would be less. But the agreement does say that it would not exceed that amount of $3,000. Hopefully, it does rain. But I would point out that also what we say annually is there are residents or property owners that do not want the mosquito spraying in their area. We do have a list from past years of people, such as people that keep bees, that for one reason or another would not want this application in the area of their property or their home, and all they have to do is call City Hall, let us know that they would like to be excluded from this, and we will instruct the contractor to not spray in that area.
Alrighty. Any questions or comments for Mr. Berry?
I'll make a motion to approve the vector control services agreement between the City of Raton and Colfax County. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the vector control services agreement between the City of Raton and Colfax County. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, Deliverate an Act on Bid Award for Solid Waste Convenience Center Project. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, we have talked about this solid waste convenience center for a long time now. And it looks like we're going to start construction of it. So it's a happy day for me and Michael Ann. We've gone through ups and downs on this project, and sometimes it just works that way. But the city of Raton did accept sealed bids from contractors to construct the solid waste convenience center. This would be located on East Hurford Avenue. It generally consists of a 120-foot by 120-foot pre-engineered steel building in which we will conduct solid waste transfer operations. That's where solid waste would be transferred from a local route truck to an over-the-road trailer that then will go on to the landfill. We are currently using the landfill at Midway, Colorado. That's a little north of Pueblo. So we transferred that on to a walking-floor trailer that's owned by the city of Raton but pulled by a contractor. We generally make a load, one walking-floor trailer every day, Monday through Friday, 52 weeks a year, so that works out pretty well. We do that currently outside, and so we're subject to all the weather conditions, including wind, which can be an issue. We would do it inside now at this point. So that's one purpose of the building. The plan would also be to consolidate our recycling operations into this building. And so I think there's a lot of efficiency gains to be made by moving the recycling, and as we've talked about before, we expend a lot of manpower and public works on recycling. I think we can really save some time. That frees the crew up to do other things, like patch those potholes, which get on people's nerves. We did receive four bids from interested contractors. You see that the low bid was submitted by Archellica Construction LLC. That is a contractor located in Maxwell, New Mexico, and their bid without applicable tax is $548,000. You see a big spread on the bids. The high bid was about $400,000 higher than the low bid, so a large spread on the bids, but we were pleased to get four bids. The engineer's estimate without tax, $600,000. That's good. The engineer was right in the middle there. And I would point out that I did act as the design engineer on the project. We will hire some professional services for construction management during construction. Myself and Jason will keep a close eye on the project. But you do have my recommendation of award in the packet to award a construction contract to Archellica Construction LLC. I'll make a couple of final comments, something we had talked about before. We had a financing issue in place with New Mexico Finance Authority in which we borrowed the funds to do the construction. We've also talked about this before. We had some grant funds through the New Mexico Environment Department, their rural infrastructure program. We still got a little bit of that money left as well, so we are well-funded on the project. We would look at a Phase Two. We'll be back to you, to talk to you after we get construction going, in which we would construct some things like fencing, paving outside the building, scale house, set of scales. We'll look at some of those things and bring that back to you. But we do have some funding available for the project. And as far as the schedule, I think upon your consideration of award tonight, we would look at construction commencing, I'm going to say in July, and I believe it would run through March or April of 2021. That's when the building would come online.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions for Mr. Berry?
I make a motion to accept the bid for the recommendation.
A motion and a second to accept and award the bid to Archellica Construction LLC. Is there any further comments? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item G, Deliverate an Act on Bid Award for First Street Great Blocks Project Phase Two. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, Great Blocks is also a project that we have talked about for a number of years. This is the, it is the project on First Street in the area of the historic railroad district, and we have teamed with New Mexico Main Street and Raton Main Street on this project. And again, in pursuing funding for this, this has taken some time to get to this point. You'll recall that there was a previous phase that was constructed last year. We did part of the project, and I think the result was a good result. We're very happy with that. We now are looking at completion of the rest of the project as it was designed up. The Great Blocks Program is a program innovated by New Mexico Main Street where they seek to have a high-impact project on three blocks of your Main Street designated area. And they don't want to go any bigger than that. They really want to get a high impact out of this area, and that's what we're doing here. So we're working on the three blocks in the area of the Railroad Depot. We did have to break this up into phases due to the funding, so I'll talk about the funding a little bit. We did receive grant funds from New Mexico Main Street in the amount of $800,000, and then the city of Raton had pledged to add $160,000 as matching funds. In the sealed bid that was recently accepted, we did get one bid, and that's from HO Construction. They're located in Albuquerque. HO is the contractor that built Phase One, and we had a good result with HO. We're very comfortable in working with them. You see a recommendation from the consultants on this project. Engineering Analytics is the lead consultant on this phase of the project. There are some other team members on the team as well, and you see a recommendation from Karen Sterns, the project engineer. You also see a bid tabulation. She found a correction in the bid, but the base bid submitted was the amount of $844,821. By the time we add New Mexico Gross receipts tax and professional services to this, we estimate that the city of Raton would have to add about $45,000 in additional funds. That's in addition to the $160,000 that we talked about. The source of funds for that would be our road fund that comes from gas tax. So we are adequately funded to do that. I would recommend to you and concur with the recommendation from our project engineer that we award the full project to HO Construction Incorporated.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns for Mr. Berry?
I'd receive this. Have the permission.
It is.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid award for First Street Great Blocks Project Phase Two to HO Construction.
We have a motion and a second to accept and award the bid for the Great Street, First Street Great Blocks Project Phase Two. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item H, Deliverate an Act on Resolution 2020-33, Corporate Authorization to Establish Bank Accounts with FNB New Mexico for the USDA Debt Service for Filter Plant Project and Authorization to Create a New N-Code Fund. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, this is an item that we have talked about again over a long period of time, related to the financing of the filter plant renovation project. And so I'm going to call on Terry Sykes to give you an update on the progress of the project. Glad to say that we are about to wrap that one up. That's been a big infrastructure project for the city of Raton. And as we have talked about before, we did have interim financing in place through a private bank, and at some point in the project, we transferred that over to USDA loan, which now we will begin paying the debt payments on that for the next 40 years. So that's the basic purpose of the authorization that you're considering tonight. Of course, Michael Ann Antonucci is our treasurer, is also involved in the financial instrument that's being set up, so she's available to answer any questions. However, I would like to call on Mr. Sykes to come forward and just give you an update on the project or his perspective on what's going on here.
Thank you, Mr. Berry, Mayor and Commissioner. Yeah, we are virtually at the end of this trail. We had several punch-list items, sludge valves, skates, just minor little issues that are now completed. We had a heater that was faulty in the filter building. That's been repaired. Logistically, we have some minor leaks on our alum tanks, and we're going to handle that under warranty because I'm not willing to, they have to take those tanks out of service, so we're not willing to risk a supply issue. So it's understood that that will be dealt with in the warranty period. And we received word from the USDA Friday that we will be able to proceed with these documents, which is what we're doing here, so.
Cool.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Yep. How long do you want it to be?
One year.
Okay, any other questions?
I have one more question.
A motion, we need a second.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2020-33. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Terry. Item I, Deliverate an Act on Resolution 2020-34, Fiscal Year 20 Budget Adjustment Number 14. Michael Ann?
Mayor and Commissioner, in your pocket is a budget adjustment mainly consisting of various line item adjustments in the general fund. I think the main thing with this budget adjustment was that I wanted to include the new fund, which we just approved on the previous item for the filter plant debt service. So if we proceed with doing the closing documents, I don't know 100% for sure when that first debt payment will be due, but we are nearing the end of the fiscal year, so with this budget adjustment, I would at least have it in there if something becomes due in June. But you'll also see that I've incorporated it into our interim budget if those payments maybe begin in July. So we're a little bit uncertain until those documents are executed, but I would like to get that included with this budget adjustment in the event that we do have to start making payments next month.
Alrighty. Any questions from Ms. Antonucci?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-34, Fiscal Year 20 Budget Adjustment Number 14.
One second.
A motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2020-34, Fiscal Year 20 Budget Adjustment Number 14. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, Deliverate an Act on Resolution 2020-35, Fiscal Year 2021 Interim Budget Approval for City of Raton, Raton Waterworks, and Raton Public Service. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, I would tell you that the efforts you have in this bucket here is a lot of work from Michael Ann, and it's, it's different this year than it has been in past years. And so I would like to get the comments from Michael Ann, and I'll give you kind of the broad brush of this interim budget real quickly, but yeah, most of the detailed information is coming from our treasurer on this. But we do anticipate, we would ask you for your consideration of the interim budget and anticipate submittal to Department of Finance Administration of the State. And then, of course, as we've done in past years, we would talk about a final budget effort and submittal of that. So in the proposed interim budget, as we had talked about before, the issue is that the city of Raton relies heavily on gross receipts tax. And with the executive orders... And with the executive orders in place that restricted a lot of business activity, it is very tough to tell what grocery seats tax is going to do throughout really the first part of the next fiscal year or the end of the present fiscal year. And so without having a reasonable revenue projection, it's hard to come and take an action on proposed expenses. The city of Raton cannot have a deficit budget like the federal government does. We have to have a proposed budget. We don't want to make a false assumption on the revenue side, but I think it's reasonable to assume that revenues are going to dip for at least part of the end of this fiscal year and the beginning of next fiscal year. So as we go by with the COVID crisis, we get a little more information, a little better idea of what's happening, and you can make your own judgment about that. But we did see a March grocery seats tax report that actually was fairly good. You addressed that, Mayor, and you said that there was some unusual shopping habits in that month. Very well could explain, you know, a fairly strong month in March in Raton. We do see some efforts for businesses to get back to work here currently, and we know that we rely on summer highway traffic in our local economy here. And if those highway servicing businesses can operate, and it's probably not going to be at normal levels, but if they can operate, we can take that into account on the revenue side of the budget. We know that we're going to have a deficit in the April and May reports, and those are ways off from when we see those. So with that said, we have tried to craft an interim budget. And the intent of putting the interim budget forward to you is to get some of the new items in this budget that the treasurer needs to work with, such as some of the projects that we have talked about. The CDBG project, that's not something that we've had in our various lines before. We need that in there so we can start working on that project, get that set up. However, we've also said that the personnel schedule is really the biggest item in any budget. And we are recommending to the commission that we start out the year with a flat personnel budget. And I would anticipate that when we get through the first quarter and we have a better idea of where we're at on the revenue side, we'll come back to the commission and we'll talk about an adjustment to that personnel schedule. Now, you also have a budget from Raton Water Works. Mr. Sykes is also here to talk about the process on the Raton Water Works budget and also from Raton Public Service Company. Now, they rely less on the NMGRT side of that. In the case of RPS, they don't rely on NMGRT at all. And in the case of Water Works, that really is specific to capital projects, so it doesn't really affect their personnel schedule. They rely on rates collection. So they're looking at that, and the business shutdown can have an impact on rate collection, but they're really kind of separating from the city where we rely heavily on that for a lot of our very basic services. So I think they do see an adjustment in personnel schedule on those two utilities, and that's something we'd like to bring back to the city commission when the time is right to do that. So we will continue to work on this in the final budget. And like I say, I think my plan is that we would talk about it closer to the end of the first quarter of the new budget year. I will let Michael Ann add comments from there and field any questions that commissioners have.
Thank you.
One of the things I would ask Michael Ann to talk about is the schedule for submission as well, because in this unusual year, we're down to the wire on that.
Mayor and Commissioner, as the city manager stated, this budget process is different than it has been in previous years due to our inability to really accurately forecast our revenues. So that's something that we will try to hold some public hearings in June and July. The final budget will be due July 31st, so we would need to bring a final budget to you for approval at that second meeting in July. So we can certainly have additional budget workshops, whatever we need to do. We will be having some meetings with our department heads. So what we present to you this evening is actually a pretty good draft that we can work with between now and then to submit a final budget. As we discussed previously, DFA did adjust the approval process for this year's budget. They even have offered that some municipalities could potentially just upload last year's budget again to meet that June 1st deadline. And so initially, we thought, oh, well, that might work until we really started thinking about all of the projects and things that we intend to probably start sometime after July. And that doesn't work for us if those aren't included in the interim budget. So what we've attempted to do here is include all of the projects. And so I've kind of given you some budget highlights of the projects that we know for sure, some of those you took action on this evening to award those bids. But we are looking at moving forward with our airport Pappy project, which was recently approved. The depot project, we still have funding available from the federal highways, and we'll be moving forward with that project as well. We've received funding for the municipal arterial project. That's our map for the Fifth Street. We also have the Great Blocks Phase Two, which was awarded this evening, and then the solid waste transfer station. We have a project at the senior center for windows and a new oven. Also looking to do some aquatic center repairs and potentially proceed with city hall lighting project to convert our lights to LED. We have the grant coming up for the VW grant through the New Mexico Environment Department for electric vehicle charging station. The airport hangar, the co-op crack ceiling, that's funding through the Mexico Department of Transportation. At the previous meeting, we did award the education building roof. I don't know if that'll be completed in this fiscal year, but I went ahead and put it in there just in case it crosses two fiscal years. We talked previously about the convention center boiler. I did only budget $75,000, but I figured that might be enough to get us started if we do proceed with that project in July. But certainly, we can look at some of these figures and, you know, increase them for the final budget if needed. And then we also have the CDBG downtown project. And then this was in last year's budget, but I went ahead and rolled it over to paint the north and south underpasses. That was a project that the city manager had asked that we do last year. So, you know, certainly all of these projects are beneficial to us because it would generate some positive gross receipts for us, which we're desperately going to need in the next six months to a year. So is there any questions on any of the projects, or is there anything that you can think of that I'm missing? Like I said, I think that this will get us started on a good proposed interim budget, and then we would just continue to work on the budget in the next couple of months in order to meet that July 31st deadline. Some other items that I did want to mention, as far as revenues go, we do base our property tax revenues on the 2019 final valuations. So that is information that I had readily available. And so it does look like our revenue on property tax will actually go up about $36,000. So I did incorporate that information into the budget. We do know that on the expense side, we're going to be faced with another minimum wage increase coming up July 1st, so we'll certainly have to factor that into those personnel schedules as we begin to work on those. We also do know that our health insurance coverage is going to increase 3%, and that's with the state of New Mexico. So you'll see in the budget that I've provided to you, if we just kind of look real quickly at the recap, I also did give you the couple graphs on the revenues and expenses for the general fund. You'll see that what we're proposing as far as utilizing general fund reserves, the $255,000 that we're showing where our expenses exceed our revenues is actually $250,000 for the airport hangar project, and I might let the city manager talk a little bit more about that. And then another $5,000 for the match on the VW electric charging station grant. So we would certainly explain that to DFA that we are looking to utilize reserves. And so those are reserves that, you know, we've had committed in previous years. We did get an extension on the hangar grant, so I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about where we're at on that.
While we're at that point, I will address the hangar that we had talked about, and you'll recall that we have a grant agreement with New Mexico State Aviation to evenly split the cost of hangar proposed at half a million dollars. So that's a pretty large structure. And originally, this was in a discussion with DOS Aviation. Their plan for the flight training school did not pay that after they were acquired by L3. It doesn't look like L3 plans to do that in Raton. So we wanted to see if there's some other type of economic development project that we could look at. I did issue a request for proposals, and we would, we did grant an extension to the date for submission of the request for proposals. And we're getting interest from air ambulance transport type of companies. So at their request, we did extend that to June 2nd. I would expect on June 2nd, we'll put together a committee to evaluate those. And what we anticipate is that bringing the commission a proposal or a recommendation regarding the construction of the hangar, that would involve $250,000 of city funds which come out of our general fund reserve. State will match that with $250,000. And we would offer an incentive deal for an air transport company to locate at Raton Municipal Airport. Obviously, that has a couple of benefits to it, but we need some time to vet their proposal, ensure that they can do what they say they're going to do. And we would consult with the Mexico Environment Economic Development Department as far as preparation of a LEEDA agreement. And then the commission will look at proposed LEEDA agreement and have to weigh whether you want to build the hangar, of course, with potential budget restrictions that we don't fully understand yet. You'll have to factor that in. So just to caution you, that's coming. And if the commission is comfortable with this, I would ask if we would, Mayor, like to appoint a commissioner to sit on that committee going through the proposal, because this is a little different type of proposal than we've done before. So that's where we're at. I would tell you that it's coming together pretty quickly after June 2nd because we are on extension with the grant agreement and because there are state funds involved, those funds could be at risk. And so we would probably try to move fairly quickly after that June 2nd date.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Berry. Any comments, questions? I would, Scott and I have talked about this a little bit, so I would take a volunteer for the committee.
I would actually have a volunteer for that.
Okay. So Mayor Protim would like to sit on that committee. So there you go. That was easy.
That was.
All righty. Any other comments or questions for Michael Ann or Mr. Berry regarding the budget?
On the, on the, on the hangar thing, as Scott and I, we've met with him before. We've come close every time on that, on that thing out there. And whenever DOS was going to do that with us before 3M bought it out, we were like that close to it happening. So I probably believe that we should erect this hangar out there. I just wanted to put that out there. Because it's, it's come close several times, and they can, they can give us some guidance on how to go with it.
Absolutely.
All right.
Okay, we have a resolution before us.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-35, wide 21, you know, budget approval for city of Raton, Raton Water Works, and Raton Public Service.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2020-35, the fiscal 2021 interim budget for city of Raton, Raton Water Works, and RPS. Is there any further discussion? Michael Ann, could we have a roll call vote on this one, please?
Sure. Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes. Thank you. Item K, deliberate enact on Resolution 2020-36, requesting priority for development of a modernization and improvement project to interstate 25 interchange located at the junction with US Highway 6487 in Raton. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, in the resolution in your packet, it may say 2020-37, and that's just what I assumed that it would be, but 2020-36, if you make that correction to the resolution. To address what the content of the resolution, I can tell you this is in regard to the interchange on I-25 at the Clayton Highway, and that's something that we've talked about really a lot over the past year, although we've had a chronic problem with traffic backups before that time. During this last year, when we talked about this at the commission meeting, I did follow up, and I have addressed various, various places this project. So I brought this up at the Northeast Regional Transportation Planning Organization. I have discussed the project with the, with the new district engineer in District Four. I've talked about it with the cabinet secretary for Department of Transportation, and I have addressed the state highway commission or the transportation board, more correctly, during that time. And I would say that I've really been very happy with the response of everyone associated with the Department of Transportation. And so we talk about in here the statewide transportation improvement plan, which is currently open for amendment and comments from the public. And when I looked at that invitation for comments from the public, I realized that I've been to a lot of places to address this as a city manager, but it might be helpful if the commission really expressed your feelings on the project and the importance to Raton. So I drafted the resolution. However, the, the, the project is located, is, is included on the statewide transportation improvement plan currently, and it's, it's included as really two phases. So there is currently a planning phase. That really means preliminary engineering, and I know that an engineer has been retained, and they've called us and let us know that when the COVID-19 stuff clears up a little bit, they'll be in Raton to talk about the project because they know that it's important to the city of Raton and especially those businesses on that corridor. So they're, they're ready to go. And you can see that the, the amount of that planning phase is $3 million listed on the STIP, and it's really listed in the current year. And then also, there's a phase which is in the future, and it's identified in 2025 construction of the project. And as a placeholder number, they put $20 million down as the cost of constructing the project. So we know it's going to be a complicated project. It's going to, it's going to be, I'm not surprised. It's going to, it's going to be, I'm not surprised by the $20 million price tag, and we'll have to see what the funding formula is when we get that far. But I, I would tell the commission that what we could expect is at least a couple of years of this preliminary engineering. That's what we've seen on other big projects. They will come to Raton. I think we can expect they'll have a number of public hearings to get input from the public. And of course, I've already got some phone calls from some area businesses wanting to know what would that configuration look like and how would that affect my business? And so whenever you do any type of construction, of course, it's going to have an impact on business. I would think that with the public input and the hearings that we'll have coming up, we can definitely keep the long-term access open to those businesses and, and not hurt anybody with the new configuration. But it's a difficult project. It's a very complicated project. And so I think it will take a couple of years for the engineers to really go through that process. That's where we're at. What the action here tonight would be is really you as a commission expressing your priority for this in, in the statewide plan. So know that it's already on the plan. We're not asking that. We're simply saying that the commission views this as a high priority for Raton and for the Northeast region.
All right. Any comments or questions for Mr. Barry?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-36, requesting priority for development of a modernization and improvement project, I-25 interchange located at the junction with US Highway 6487.
One second.
A motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2020-36. Is there any further discussion? I think this is something we've talked about for a while, and nice to see it on the list. Okay. All in favor? Vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioner, I will submit that to the appropriate person who takes that public input, and I'll submit it as a comment from the city commission.
All right. Item L, city manager's report. Mr. Barry.
Mayor and Commissioner, Mayor, I believe that you talked about the soft reopening for dine-in restaurants earlier. I had stepped out to sharpen a couple of pencils, so I'll reiterate that, because I think it's important that we get the word out to the public. But today, the governor did announce that the state's emergency public health order will be amended to permit limited outdoor dine-in services for most of the state. That's beginning tomorrow. And so we'll work with our economic development specialists to try to get the word out to restaurants, make sure that they understand what this will allow them to do. They have a good understanding and some compliance, because of course, there are some specifications on how you go about this. But I think that's a good move, that when we're approaching summer travel season, that we can get back to accommodating those travelers here in Raton. I have received the question, what's going on with Sugary Canyon State Park? I have tried to ask that question of some various state park officials, and I have not really got a clear answer. So the, the situation is some state parks are, are open and operating on a limited basis, some state parks are not. My question is, what's the criteria for opening a state park? I really have not got an answer to that. I will continue to follow up on that, and I'll try to notify the commission and the public where we are on Sugary Canyon State Park as soon as I can find out something. So I'll continue with that question.
Did this man give us any indication at all about it?
I have not got that contact yet. And I, in fairness, I spent a lot of today doing things, getting ready for the meeting, or we had a couple of other things going. So we'll make a better effort at that tomorrow, and I think that we will get some answers to that. So I would anticipate that with some of the discussion of the June 1st reopening, makes sense that we would see that as well. But I'll try to get that information for you. I know we have a lot of questions here locally on that, so I'll be working on that. I did participate in a telephone conference. This is regarding the capital improvement plan at Raton Municipal Airport. That conference included Federal Aviation Administration, New Mexico State Aviation, some staff here, and our consulting engineer. And so you had awarded the precision approach instrumentation at the last meeting. You'll recall that FAA has kind of a backwards process where we bid it, we award it, and then we apply for grant funds from them. So I submitted the application for grant funds. They said that's all good. We would anticipate that moving along. We also talked about the reconstruction of Taxway Bravo. That would be the next major project that we had on the old capital improvement plan for Raton Airport. That's a fairly large project. It's similar to the reconstruction of Taxway Alpha that we talked about before. The distinction is Taxway Bravo is a parallel to the Crosswind Runway, Runway 725. Taxway Alpha is the, is parallel to the primary runway, 220, and it's the primary taxiway. And so Alpha was, has been completed, as you remember, and now we look at Taxway Bravo, but it's also a large project. So we talked about the, what FAA calls the entitlements for Raton Municipal Airport over the years, which necessitated a revision to our capital improvement plan. We did make that revision and resubmitted it to Federal Aviation Administration, but that basically puts Taxway Bravo back for a year. But we do have some entitlements that we need to look at doing some work on. So another important project that we need to look at is pavement maintenance consisting of crack sealing of both runways that I had mentioned. If we don't seal those, we get water infiltration down to the subgrade, which is a sensitive clay soil. If the clay starts moving, that's where we see the pavement breakdown. So we're going to look at moving up the crack sealing and moving Taxway Bravo reconstruction down by a year. That's the gist of what we talked about. We did talk about an allocation of funding under CARES legislation from the federal government to the city of Raton. I did submit an application today for that funding in the amount of $30,000. In our application, we would offset operational costs at the airport, so that $30,000 would come to the general fund. It's not for a development-type project, which the other projects we talked about would fall into that category, as operational expenses. I would note in my report that Miners Colfax Medical Center has been named a 2020 Top 100 Critical Access Hospital in the United States. That's kind of old news. I think that was announced in March, but I'm getting around to it now. Critical Access Hospital is a federal program to improve healthcare and keep essential services in rural communities. This designation for a rural hospital. There, MCMC is a top 100. There are about 1,350 critical access hospitals in the United States, so they're top 10%. So wanted to point that out. I would also mention that we are in wildfire season now. This is when we start to turn our attention to that. Our crews have responded to deployment requests on various fires that have occurred in the area. I think we've got some dangerous conditions out there right now. We were really thankful for the rain. We're getting a little bit of rain here and there, but we're also getting some lightning. And so we were out on some wildfires here recently, and of course, we kind of wait and see what the weather brings. I think people can help by being very careful if they do go out in the country. Just be very careful, very dry out there. That's all I have, Mayor.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. Barry. Any other comments? Commissioner Chatterley? Commissioner Jacomo?
I'm here.
Commissioner Chavez?
I do.
Okay.
The, I think, I think allocates should go out to the, I think allocates should go out to our city crews. They've been taking care of, you know, the short-handers have been taking care of the parks, the streets. Yesterday, I happened to drive by the Memorial Park, and I saw the local Boy Scout troop. We're out there, they replaced the flags and were cleaning it up. And I think that allocates should go out to, to all the city crew for, for what they've been doing. I saw them with the street sweeper today, running on the, on the, not the main street, but the side streets. So I think that you should give them a little pat on the back.
I appreciate that comment, Commissioner, because my observation is city crews have really performed well this entire spring. We've had a long-to-do list. They have been very productive on getting those things done. I've, I've been really pleased with the efforts of, of all of our crews, the public works crew, the utility crews. I can tell you that police, fire, and ambulance, they've had their hands full. They've been running pretty hard, and they have covered everything. So really, I think everyone has really stepped up during this period. So I appreciate your comment.
Absolutely.
One second then.
Mayor Protim?
I just had a few citizens approach me and ask if there's a way we can help them put together some community gardening. So I had some ideas, and maybe I can get together with you, Mr. Barry, sometime, and we'll just talk about what we can do to get that promoted. That's all.
Squash, right?
Squash. Squash and green beans. Don't forget for the potatoes.
That's right. I have no further comments, so seeing nothing else, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.